I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And silence also. All right, have a roll call, please be.
Yes?
Mr. Lawrence here.
I'm here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Zanotta?
Here.
Mr. Barr here.
Here as well. Next order of business, acceptance of the minutes from January 9th, 2024. Everybody a chance to review?
Yes.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Have a motion then to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second.
On favor? Uh, so moved. Next order of business, discussion. Appeal number 237810, area variance, Pedro Pintado, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R8 zoning district. Where no accessory structure is allowed over 800 square feet in one acre zoning district, the applicant has added to a pre-existing barn size 30 feet by 20.5 feet, with an additional 20 feet point five by 30 foot square foot addition with a roof overhang close to the property line. The original barn was 621 square feet. Now the structure is 1242 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 442 square feet to allow the 30 foot by 20.7 foot addition to remain. These measurements do not include the roof overhang on either side. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide zero feet for the overhang on the original barn structure, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet for a roof overhang on existing barn to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 7.5 feet for original barn structure, thus requesting a variance of 32.5 feet to allow existing building built around 1970 to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide six feet, thus requesting a variance of 34 feet to allow for a new addition to remain. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide two feet for the shed, thus requesting a variance of 38 feet to allow for a four feet overhang to remain. The property is located at 136 Stony Kill Road on 1.00 acres and is identified as tax grid number 605602897684 in the town of Wapanger. Anybody here representing this applicant? Please step to the microphone and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sattler with Sattler Engineering, representing Pedro Pintado.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Gotcha. And that was a, that was an earful, right?
Well presented.
Certainly have a lot going on. So, you know, we usually ask folks to give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it, but there's quite a bit here to digest. But go ahead, just sort of a brief description for everybody, what you need and why you need it.
So this is Pedro Pintado, him and his family. That's their primary residence. It's been their primary residence since 2015.
Use the microphone.
You can't hear me?
Well, we can hear you, but they want you to talk into the microphone.
Yeah, recording, you're being recorded.
For the public. Okay. So, um...
Thank you.
That is their primary residence since 2015. He's an electrical contractor. And the barn, the front part of what it's called here on the survey, the utility building was there when he purchased the property. He has since added on to the rear 30 feet. You know, everyone needs more space, more storage, more everything. It's very difficult to see it from the road. Next to it is a stone wall and it's wooded. So I don't think it's, it compromises the integrity of the neighborhood. It's difficult to see from the road. We'd like to think it's a reasonable request, but it is a mouthful. We are asking for a few things. But we think in keeping up the character of the neighborhood that it's rural. There's no homes there. It's forest, it's wooded, not densely wooded, but it's wooded. So we're hoping that you would see, recognize all that and grant us our variances.
Barbara, only this work was permitted?
Excuse me?
Did he have building permit for all this work?
There are no building permits. He opened one so that I could deny him for the back part of this building. And then because he's attached it and the other one had no permit and I couldn't tell that it started before zoning when we did the aerial views. It's not there in the 60s. I start seeing it early 70s. That's why it's approximately from 1970. So whoever owned it before never took out permits. There's one other thing that we noticed when we found it is that on the survey, you'll see they have a paved drive area in the front yard to the left of the house, depending on how you're looking at it. So that looks like it's been there. But when I spoke to the owner, they started a gravel drive to get to this structure. So you can't have two driveways. He's got to pick what he's going to close off, you know? And the other concern I had is he can't run his business from here. It's a residential neighborhood. And what really, what really made us stop was this looked like somebody was building a house out of it. You know, just with the doors and the lean, the overhang. It started to look like somebody was building a house there.
So I see that the siding has a different color and that might have been where a window was installed, you're saying?
Well, I don't, this isn't, at least it hasn't been closed up. But there's a door. I don't know if he put the window in or if there was a window. You know, I can't tell what parts new. The door might have been put into the old section. You know, I don't really know because it was already sided.
The front two-story has been existing for 40 something years. And the reason why you'd have a hard time seeing it on like a Google Earth, oops, a Google Earth view is, you know, there is a lot of tree cover there.
So you're saying the front part is two-story?
Uh, story and a half.
Because I don't see the roof line being that distinct, distinctly different.
The back part is clearly one-story and sits lower than...
Okay, so it's just storage?
We're going to need you to come to the mic, please, and state your name.
This is the homeowner, Pedro.
Right. Name and address, please.
My name is Pedro. Good evening, everyone.
Good.
I'm glad to be here because really I would like to have solution for my, you know, for the structure of the house. And thanks for giving me the opportunity. If that is the case, to have the chance also. Basically, the one part of the tavern, the bar over there was existing was, so it was there. Even it was a little overhang in the front, but I re-built it. I take it up. Does not anymore in the front. So, but, you know, I have my tools there, my, you know, my power tools. So in the first...
Is this one or two-story, the original part?
Two-storyish.
Two-story, right?
No, it's one.
But it's higher than the new part, correct?
Actually, no. I, the last one, the next one, the new one, is I leveled out the same roof. Basically, I put the same level.
So the window is just for storage upstairs?
Yes.
On the second floor? It's not a full floor?
It's no second floor. It's just one level. The whole level, the whole building.
The whole barn is for storage. He's not running business. His office is a diac, he just stores, you know, every drop. There's material, equipment, tools, and that's what that's for.
But I need to be clear, in a residential neighborhood, the storage of materials is not allowed. He can have his tools and everything. He's using it for his personal...
My personal storage. It's not from company, it's my personal, from my family. So I explained before, it's a house, a small house. I have only two to put over there. You know, I have my tools there. I have my lawn cutter, grass clump, I got to put it there. I have my tools. So I decided to build in the back. But I'm sorry, I didn't know, you know, the logs to put over there. So now I have the stuff, which is okay, I agree with that. And then I decided to do all the requirements you guys asked me for, which I did. Respectfully, I did it. I follow everything. I told the, they want to send me inspector, they sent me inspector. Very good.
Is this for the house?
Yes.
Is this for your house?
No, no, from the barn.
Well, we haven't done anything with the building inspector yet.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I didn't do not, just stopped what I'm doing. And I hired, which I know Bill, and he's representing me to do everything right.
When he got the stuff, we're quarter, it was a document that...
I think at this point, we need to take it back to the board and...
No building permit. That's what he retained our office. We did the as-built plan, so we can get a building permit, not knowing that there was going to be zoning issues. You know, here we are. It was just kind of a snowball effect. If it was easy, I guess anybody could do it.
Do we have any additional documentation on the age of the original structure? Or it's just kind of a guess?
Because there were no, there's no permits. We could only go through GIS, looking at, you know, through the decades. Was it there, you know, in the 50s now? We didn't see it in the 60s and we see it in the 70s. So unless they can provide, if you could provide documentation that that structure was there before 1963, then that would be a legal non-conforming structure.
You don't have anything like that?
No, he bought it like years ago. It's easily over 40, there for 40 years that I can find. But I don't know if I can go back to 1963 because we didn't have that kind of technology then.
Right, I could see it in the 70s. It's not showing up on the aerials in the 60s. I see it in the, you know, and they go 60, 70 till you start getting closer. So 60, it's in the 60s, it's not there, it's there in the 70s.
That we can't, that we can't provide any documentation that it was there prior to 63.
Well, in the 60s, it's very dark, so with the trees, it might have been there. But when you look at some of the aerials, they're in red, like they're hard to read. But that's the best I could get, the documentation.
We're going to tell you what, you know, not what we would like, or, you know, we know it's there since at least the 70s, maybe late 60s, who knows?
I'd give it the 50-year-old, easy.
Will be speculation.
Yeah. All right. Well, we honestly got to come take a look at this. You know, we always do a field visit, you know, prior to the next meeting and we'll definitely do that here.
Can I just ask a question real quick? The original structure, was it 20 by 30 or 20 by 20?
It's 20 by 30.
I got 20 by 30 on here. And on here, it says 20 by 20. So I'm just wondering. 20 by 30?
Yes.
The side property line where you have, I guess, zero feet, is that marked in any way? Is that staked out by a surveyor, like is it...
I'm not sure, but there's a stone wall there. There's no mistaking that it's a property line.
Just with, you know, that tight of a dimension, you know, zero essentially? There's a chance it's over?
On his survey, he's not showing anything over. Maybe, there might be that little roof overhang.
I mean, at another house we did where it was basically similar, where it was zero over, you know, we had the surveyor, you know, basically give us the lines so we could confirm.
But I think we're comfortable stating that if there's any question that that overhang, it's a big overhang. If there's any question that that's starting to tickle the property line and we feel better taking two feet off, we have no problem with that.
I mean, it's tough to see on the survey, but you're...
What, what's under that overhang?
Nothing.
So that could be removed?
What was the purpose of the roof overhang?
It was there when he bought it.
Yeah, the phrase overhead, it was there. I mean, it just speaks, that's it. It was because behind was wheelbarrows, you know, tools from outside. But it's only roof, like we took, you know, all of that, only roof.
He started using that as outdoor storage. That's why he built the thing for indoor storage, so it's had a site.
To approve anything that close, I would want a surveyor to stake out that portion of the property line. So if you're willing to cut it back, I think that's probably not necessary. But if you want us to try to look to approve the zero, we want to have a surveyor...
Pedro told me before, meaning if it's an issue, if I have a problem, we're moving it.
Okay.
And therefore, no, they can wait.
Yeah, I think, you know, David, we go out there and see it. If there's any question, then we're close to one or the other. Either we move it or you're surveying that one or the other. Go ahead. Yeah, someone tell me?
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, it's going to be, have to do one or the other.
Yeah, this is definitely eyes on.
Yeah.
Eyes on, exactly.
Yeah. So we're looking to do a site visit out to the house, not this Saturday, but the following. What's that? So Feb. 10th, we'll be out there, we'll be there around nine o'clock. And if you guys could be there, great. If not, you know, we'll be there. Okay.
Pedro will be there. About 50% tour.
And then Barbara, should we probably still schedule a public hearing, right? If it doesn't come to that, we should schedule it.
Right, you can always adjourn it.
All right, gotcha. All right, and we're going to schedule a public hearing for that following Tuesday, which would be the 13th. So at 2:13, we'll schedule a public hearing.
Here at 7:00.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
She has...
Don't leave yet.
She, yeah, she has something for you.
What time did you say we do it?
Nine o'clock. On the 10th.
Bill.
No problem.
Read the instructions. He has to do mailings. He has to do mailings. Yeah, so it's in that envelope. Yeah, you might, might be willing to just pay you to take care of that. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll wait for you here, ready? You all set? Got set, babe? All right, next item on the agenda, appeal number 247813, area variance, Joseph Sabatelli, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20/40 zoning district. Where 25 feet to the side right yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 20 feet for a new addition, thus requesting a variance of five feet. Where 50 feet to the front property line is required, the applicant can provide 12.3 feet for a new addition, thus requesting a variance of 37.7 feet. The property is located at 5 Peters Road on .31 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635703066044 in the town of Wapanger. And for the record, please, Paul, state your name.
That was the hard part. Paul Pelon, S&amp;P Architects. I'm here on behalf of Joe Sabatelli, who's here in the audience. As you stated, they live at 5 Peters Road in the town of Wapanger. They'd like to put an addition on their home. That addition would consist of removing a portion of the first floor existing room that's there, removing the roof and then adding a second floor. Up on the second floor would be bedrooms. And then on the first floor, replace that addition that's coming down. Mudroom, laundry room, set of stairs to access the second floor and garage. The current zoning is R2040, so that means that the setbacks in the front are 50 feet. On the side, they're 25 feet and in the rear, they're 50 feet. Given the existing size of the lot that's there, if you look at the site plan, there's no real portion of the existing house that is beyond that front setback requirement. So basically, the entire existing house is in front of the setback line, between the front property line and setback line. It seems to be the case with all of the homes in the neighborhood. I believe in the package, I provided some GIS photos showing the adjacent properties. They all seem to be fairly small. But again, with that distance of, I think it says 103 feet for the depth of the lot, if I take 50 feet off the front and 50 feet off the back, there's really not very much left. So, and in fact, if you look at that buildable area that's indicated there, the dimensions of that are approximately 70 feet by 19 feet. About 900 square feet there. And again, if you look at some of the other lots, it doesn't seem to be an unusual circumstance. It seems like this happened. But it would appear to me, and I really don't know, it's kind of up to us, I guess, to discuss, but it seems that at some point, there was some sort of a rezoning that took place. And in support of that, in 2009, the Sabatellis were granted a variance for the front property line. And I do have documentation for that. And at that time, the front setback was 35 feet. So it seems to me that now at 50 feet, something must have occurred between 2009 and 2024. So we tried to design it in such a way that it's not going to increase the distance to the front property line. And so we're, and not increasing it any more than maybe any of the adjacent properties are. So at that point, we, you know, felt we had to come in for the variance. We got our notification and we're here tonight to discuss that with you.
Got it, understood. So basically, the proposed work is not encroaching any more than the home already is?
Correct.
Correct.
The new covered patio at the back.
Yes.
Does that technically need a variance?
This is part of the build, correct?
It has a roof over it.
If it has a roof, it's structure. So that's... Is that new?
I mean, with that 50 foot is ridiculous.
Are you building that or that's there? It's a new covered patio.
There currently is one there, we're actually going to enlarge it. We're going to make it the width of the back of the house.
I just want to make sure you're getting everything you need in one go ideally, but it seems ridiculous, but...
What, what? I'm sorry, what seems ridiculous?
Well, that new covered patio, since it's new and it's technically not within the front setback.
No, but that would go by the rear setback and they have plenty of room for that.
Okay, so the fact that it's not in that ridiculous little triangle shape.
So when we look at a structure from side to side, if that's in the rear and it has a rear setback, we're only looking at whatever's new in the front.
Okay.
So that he gets...
Okay, so no issues with that?
Even if we were to remove that porch, the rest of the house is still in between the front setback and the front property line.
Yeah.
You know, and I know that, I know that you're really looking at this in terms of the property line, but I just wanted to point out that because of the way the pavement is, there does seem, give the appearance that there's more room in the front property line, even though it's not their property line. I think it's about 28 feet to the edge of pavement. So, and again, we tried to do it in such a way that we're really not, we're not increasing that distance to that front property line.
I understand.
So to speak to the 28 feet to make sense, a town road is 50 feet wide typically. We paved 24 feet and you have 26 feet left over. And on average, we split the difference, 13 on both sides. In this particular case, this front yard has 28 feet of town property, but it gives it a nice front yard than if we only gave them 13 feet and the road was pushed.
Peters Road, I think we've been here before.
And we have no issues with the pool and pool's permits. We're going to look at that, right?
All right, we'll look into all that. And what about the existing garage?
Yeah.
The garage was there, we go.
What year did you buy this?
Well, 2009 came for a variance for the front porch. So how long were you there? So 2004, maybe?
Yeah, come up by the microphone, sorry, sorry, B.
Yeah, Joey, name and address, just for the record. Your name and address.
Joe Sabatelli, 5 Peters Road.
Gotcha.
So this, so you were in the house 20 years?
Roughly, yes.
And that's the same pool? You haven't had to replace it? The pool. But I'll check the files tomorrow and see if they have that.
Okay.
It would be easier for you to, if they're not, if there were not permits, it would be easier for you to legalize it now than have to do this process the second time.
You don't want to be here twice.
I would assume we had CEO for the creation of the house or one of the government.
Yeah.
Well, 20 years ago, unfortunately, CEO searches, they drove past the front of the house. And unfortunately today, for us, and for you, but today, we actually walked the property. You have to sign off that we're allowed on it so that these kind of things don't happen. But they might have permits, so, you know, I do have to look.
All right, so we'll check into that. All right. Any other questions, you guys?
You did the survey in 2004 and the pool was there.
What was that?
I just happened to look at the survey and 2000, it was dated 2004 and the pool shown on the survey.
Right, so we know it was there, but that doesn't mean it was there.
Right.
You know, to be honest, can I just take two minutes to go check quick?
You sure?
I think that would be better than if he's going to need a public hearing and we have to add that. I'd rather do it once.
Sure.
In the attic, is that a little door at the back? Is that basically a little storage space? That's why I'm looking out there? It's not like an exterior space at all?
Oh, right. We're at space above the garage.
Okay, that's just, you know, within the, slope of the roof, basically.
We're going to leave it unfinished, so just a minute.
The existing driveway would be removed essentially then, right? Since you're not allowed to?
Got it.
Yeah, okay.
I was wondering, because it shows a garage and shed to the left on the site plan.
I'm sorry, one more time?
It shows a garage and a shed to the left of the house.
Correct.
On the site plan. Those are staying?
I'd like to leave that as a shed.
Handsome Barbara's going to check.
Yeah, it would no longer be allowed to have a driveway. They only let you have, you know, the one.
All right, because I'm sure you heard in the last one, you can't have two driveways. But also it says here garage and shed. There's a little enclosed area behind the garage. Is that the shed or you want the whole thing as a shed?
I'd like the whole thing as a shed. I won't be pulling cars into it.
So it won't be, it won't be a garage anymore once you have your two car?
Correct. There's so much kid stuff in there now, I don't use it as a garage.
Yeah, I mean, it looks tight, tight for an actual garage. Yeah.
Agreed.
So while Barbara's looking, I do have that letter from 2009 just to kind of support that change in the zoning.
Do you have the dimensions of the existing garage and shed together?
I do not have it off the top of my head. Do you know what it is?
You want a picture of the old house, 1930, before? The house right then now. You gave me two. You gave me two. The house as it sits right now, today.
B, can I bring up Google map? B, can I bring up Google Maps?
In terms of the side of the footprint, if you look at the shaded area on that first floor, that's the footprint of the first.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I just ran a quick study, so they had a lot of COs, and they, the pool is legal, and it was done in nineteen ninety-seven. But I don't see anything for the garage.
So we would potentially be legalizing the garage. It sounds like you want to keep it, so we would need to add that.
We're going to have to add that for you to keep it, because it doesn't meet the zoning. But you did have, you as someone, whoever you bought the house from, did do a lot of permits. And if you've owned it for that long, so have you, so they are trying to do anything.
So we, we would need the size of the garage and the, you know, distance from the property line?
The distance is on here, actually, on the survey.
Right, I do have one point seven.
Okay, one point seven and three point six, or three point, yeah, three point six? Yeah. Then we should just confirm the size.
Okay.
So Barbara, how does that officially get added into it, right?
So we can do it a few ways. They can come back on the tenth, and we can amend it, or we can amend it, depending the size of it. And then, B, we'll, I'll change the legal notice, you know, and when you go out, you'll inspect that as well. We'll send you all the documentation as we change it.
Okay.
And then we'll give Paul the new, uh, legal notice, add it to the side and front for the garage. We just have to get rid of the numbers. So you'll, it's up to you how you want to do it, or do you want to get all the numbers and come back on the tenth to formulate it and have a public hearing the next meeting? Either one, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think we kind of need to know, right?
Absolutely.
So I'm, I apologize, I was kind of Google mapping. So, so the pool is, the pool is okay?
The pool's fine.
But the, but the.
We need you to come back on the tenth.
Okay.
With the size of the garage, but send me the, like, update everything for me ahead of time, because then I want to change the agenda and all the information they need.
Okay.
Okay?
So I think what we'll do there, we'll still, we'll still do the site visit on that, that Saturday. Sorry. So we'll do the site visit on the tenth. We'll do that, probably around nine thirty, we'll be there. And now, do we set the public hearing still?
Well, we can if you want to know everything before, and they'd have to come back on the thirteenth.
Right.
To discuss it further, and then the public hearing would be the.
Be the following.
The last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're going to need to do that. All right. Well, uh, so we'll, we'll have another discussion then, on the thirteenth, and then we'll set the public hearing date after that. Does that sound right?
Right.
Okay, so revise indicating the shed.
Correct.
Location to the property lines, revise our application to include said shed.
To add the two variances.
Come back on the thirteenth for discussion.
Correct.
Set a public hearing, and then have the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, so.
But they'll be out at the tenth to your house.
Right, we'll still be there.
Okay.
We'll still be out there on the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll still be out there on the tenth.
So the timing, the thirteenth is going to be in the public hearing also?
It'll be a discussion.
For discussion.
And then the thirteenth, the public hearing goes out.
You'll set it on the thirteenth, for two weeks from now.
Okay, great. Got it? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want stakes in the ground?
That would be good.
You want them to, you want us to put a couple of stakes in the ground, show where the corners of the addition will be?
You should, it'd be great. It'd be great.
All right, thank you.